I didn't know how much it was.
Man, sixteen, sixteen eight, something, and it's supposed to be sixteen two thirty-four.
Okay. Thank you. Did a job catching that?
Huh?
Did a good job catching that?
Yeah. Well, show you.
I didn't know what the...
Well, when I said sixteen four.
We're doing.
How are you?
Oh, you're back.
See ya.
I love that color.
Do a good eulogy. Or whatever we call this. If you're gonna do it.
Here we go.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hereby call this meeting of the Sedalia City Council to order. The first item on our agenda is prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor, lead us in legislative prayer.
Would you please stand as able and join me in an invocation? Your Lord and Father, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, mayor, administrators, staff, ward members, meet to hear about, discuss, make decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We especially tonight, we say farewell to two of our council members, Chris Marshall and Steve Bliss, and we wish them very well on their way, and we will be welcoming two new members coming up. Please bless them and thank all of our council for their service to this community, to their fellow citizens. We ask for your protection for all of our first responders who were twenty-four seven to serve and protect us at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which the thousands, many thousands, have fought and died to create and preserve for two hundred fifty years. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our military and civilians serving our great country today, here and throughout the world. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Hiller?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Bliss?
Here.
The next item we have on our agenda is a special award. For that, we'll invite up Chief Irwin to present.
They got Barry coming. Yeah, okay. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry. Forgot the most important part. Thank you for seeing me. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, it is my privilege and honor to announce the Sedalia Fire Department's firefighter of the year. This year's recipient is someone whose name was brought up to me without hesitation and by multiple people within the department before I even asked for any nominations, and that speaks volumes of them. It is with great pride that I present this year's firefighter of the year award to battalion chief Barry White. Chief White's leadership, dedication, and relentless pursuit of excellence are second to none. His commitment to training, not just for himself, but for every crew that works under him, is a testament to his character and his drive to see this department thrive. As I mentioned earlier, or mentioned, each year, we ask members of the department who they believe deserve this honor, but this year was different. Before I could even had a chance to ask and start the process, I had no less than three people come to me unprompted saying the same thing. This year, it has to be Chief White. That kind of unsolicited recognition says everything about the respect and admiration he has earned from those around him. Chief White began his career with the Sedalia Fire Department on September fourth, two thousand and one. Shortly thereafter, he answered another call to serve. As a member of the National Guard, he deployed to fight against terrorism. From day one, he has been someone who has answered when duty calls, no matter the cost. Whether it's coming in off duty to battle house fires, assist with community events like tractor pulls, fireworks displays, responding to mutual aid calls anywhere in the state or simply being available anytime he is needed, Chief White is always there. He has been in moments that would test anyone, whether it's meeting the President of the United States or sitting for hours on a burned-out structure waiting for investigators to get there, but you'll never hear him speak about those experiences for personal recognition. For him, it's always about the department, always about the mission, never for himself. His involvement in nearly every specialized team that we've had, hazmat, rope rescue, confined space, as instructors for new hires, shows that there is no job beneath him, no challenge too great, when the department needs him. The only real shame tonight is that it took this long to recognize him for this award. Chief White, your tireless work ethic, humility, and devotion to service makes you not just a worthy recipient of this award, but one of the most valuable people I've ever known. I am deeply humbled and honored to stand beside you tonight and present you with this award. Barry White, congratulations, firefighter of the year.
All right, the next item on our agenda is approval of the previous session meeting minutes. These are the council meeting minutes dated April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction.
Okay.
They put down sixteen thousand eight fifty-nine ninety-nine on the total for the Derek Carr show, and it should have been sixteen thousand two thirty-four ninety-nine. And so, anyway, I want it in the record correctly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I also have a correction that's on the floor. We'll go ahead and vote on that first. This is the, it would be a motion to amend the meeting minutes, and we're going to amend the amount for the Derek Carr show to sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. That motion, do I have a motion regarding that?
Move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Now, we are voting on the amendment to the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, now, we'll go ahead and move on to considering the meeting minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Now, we'll move on to the acceptance of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission meeting minutes. These are dated March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion and a second?
Move.
I have a motion to approve, and I have a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next is the roll call of standing committees. First, we have Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have four items with two ordinances attached to them. Our first item tonight is a presentation of the revenue collection trends from Ms. Jessica Pile.
Hello. So, we're looking at the second chart of numbers, the fiscal year-to-date, and this is for a full year. The net sales and use tax is through January, or on January sales. It's up fiscal year-to-date over the prior year, like I said, for a full year of over one million dollars or five point four percent. If you recall, we budgeted a four percent increase over the prior year, so that is over budget by around two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. The marijuana tax, that was an additional three percent sales tax that was voted on by the voters. That started at the cash registers in October of two thousand and twenty-three, so prior year, we only had two months of payments. You can see the increase over the last, over this last fiscal year from the prior year. The franchise tax, that large difference, the majority of that is the charter settlement on streaming video class action. That settlement was around three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that we received in April of two thousand and twenty-three, was at the beginning of that fiscal year. The other two hundred and some thousand dollar difference, that's due to a decrease in natural gas, which was down twenty-five point five percent over the fiscal year. Transportation tax, that's higher fiscal year-to-date due to gasoline tax, which was higher nine point nine percent fiscal year-to-date, and a vehicle sales increase of four point three percent fiscal year-to-date, with vehicle sales in that same category remaining flat. And then, the property tax payments collected over the prior fiscal year was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more, and the majority of those receipts come in December and January, whenever the citizens make their tax payments at the county. Any questions in looking at that full picture of the twelve months?
Does the council seek any further information for Director Pile? Thank you, Director Pile.
Yep. So, then, we're into the next, the current fiscal year. We have one month to report the deposit that we received in April on February sales at the stores. In reporting for one month over the prior year, we're up fiscal year-to-date over fifty-eight thousand dollars, which is three point eight percent. Again, we budgeted a four percent increase, so we are slightly below budget by around three thousand dollars so far. Any questions on that?
Any questions, council? Thank you, Director Pile.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Our second item tonight is the Finance Department has identified records currently on file that have met or exceeded the required retention periods as established by the Missouri Secretary of State Local Government Records Management Guidelines. In accordance with these guidelines, the records are eligible for destruction. The Finance Department respectfully requests the council authorization to proceed with the destruction of these documents, ensuring compliance with state records, management policies, and best practices.
Do I have a motion and a second approving the destruction of these records? I have a motion and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the motion that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Our third item for tonight is amending city code regarding public participation at open meetings. The proposed ordinance establishes clear guidelines for public participation at city of Sedalia meetings to enhance structure, ensure safety, and support the orderly conduct of city business. By designating meetings as limited public firms, it is reinforcing the importance of respectful and relevant dialogue while still encouraging public involvement. The ordinance also provides a designated free speech zone for political expression, outlines expectations for public comment, and ensures that disruptions are handled fairly. Overall, this ordinance aims to foster a more consistent, efficient, and productive meeting environment.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-two.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-two. An ordinance of the city of Sedalia amending the city code regarding public participation at open meetings.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-two. Do I have any council discussion regarding that? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-two. An ordinance of the city of Sedalia amending the city code regarding public participation at open meetings.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill number twenty-five, twenty-five dash seventy-two. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
You have seven yes and one absent.
Motion passes.
Our fourth item is a temporary premises extension. The proposed ordinance authorizes a temporary extension of the license premises for the Liberty Center Association for the Arts during the two thousand and twenty-five Scott Joplin Ragtime Festival, scheduled for May the twenty-eighth through the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The extension allows the organization to include the adjacent sidewalk and street area for the sale of alcoholic beverages as part of the event. This action supports the festival's success by enhancing the visitor experience and contributing to the downtown atmosphere.
Okay, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-three.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-three. An ordinance temporarily extending the premises for Liberty Center Association for the Arts relating to the two thousand and twenty-five Scott Joplin Ragtime Festival.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-three. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor?
I have a question. Is this during a specific time during the festival or for the entire festival?
I will refer that point of information to interim city administrator Ward.
It's, I don't know specifically which nights, but it's, it's an extension of their liquor license when they serve.
Thank you. I would just question.
All right, thank you. Any other council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-three. An ordinance temporarily extending the premises for Liberty Center Association for the Arts relating to the two thousand and twenty-five Scott Joplin Ragtime Festival.
Passage, second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Robinson is absent. Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
And that concludes the Finance Administration report.
Thank you, Chairwoman Bogus. Up next, we have Public Works Chairman Hiller. You got the floor?
Okay, I got seven items tonight. First, the lease agreement renewed the partnership between the city of Sedalia and the Care Connection for Aging Services, allowing continued operations of the Sedalia Senior Center within the Hecker Community Center. The agreement establishes a five-year term beginning April first, two thousand and twenty-five, with designated space provided for senior programming, meal service, and administrative functions. This longstanding agreement has been a successful and valuable resource for Sedalia's senior population, supporting health, nutrition, and community engagement. The contract reflects mutual responsibilities and includes provisions for maintenance, insurance, and appropriate facility use.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-four.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-four. An ordinance authorizing a lease agreement buying between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Parks and Recreation, and Sedalia Senior Center.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-four. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-four. An ordinance authorizing a lease agreement buying between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Parks and Recreation, and the Sedalia Senior Center.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of the bill that's on the floor. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson is absent, and Oldham?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
During the Street Department's strategic planning progress, as subsequent budget work sessions, staff presented the need for a new skid steer mail attachment to support ongoing street maintenance and repair work. This ordinance authorizes the purchase of a coal planer, PC thirty-one, skid steer attachment from Foley Equipment Company through a source well agreement that satisfies the city purchasing policy. The total purchase price is twenty-eight thousand one fifty-eight sixty, which includes a thirty-five hundred trade-in for a Bobcat attachment. This equipment purchased was included in the approval of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-five.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-five. An ordinance authorizing a sales agreement for the purchase of a skid steer mail attachment for the Street Department.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-five. Do I have any council discussion regarding this bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-five. An ordinance authorizing a sales agreement for the purchase of a skid steer mail attachment for the Street Department.
Final passage? Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill that is on the floor. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
Okay. As part of the fiscal twenty-six budget and operational planning, the Water Pollution Control Department identified the need for a dedicated skid steer to support ongoing work at Sedalia's three wastewater treatment facilities. This ordinance authorizes the purchase of a Kubota SV L sixty-five skid steer and bucket from Crown Power and Equipment Company in Lamont, Missouri, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, one-one-two-six-two-four-kba. The equipment will be used to clean out basins, move pallets and drums, and perform general maintenance tasks for which the department has previously relied on borrowing equipment or renting from outside vendors. The purchase price is sixty-one thousand three twenty-seven-three cents, includes a cooperative discount of eighteen thousand nine twenty-three fifty-two, and is within the amount approved by the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-six.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-six. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a skid steer and bucket for the Water Pollution Control Department.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-six. Do I have any council discussion regarding this bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-six. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a skid steer and bucket for the Water Pollution Control Department.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill that is on the floor. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
As part of the fiscal year twenty-six budget and ongoing, ongoing equipment planning, the Water Department identified the need for a compact excavator to assist with small-scale water line repairs and maintenance. The request proposes the purchase of a Kubota KX oh eighteen dash four mini excavator and two buckets from Crown Power and Equipment Company of Lamont, Missouri. Machines compact design, which restricts, which restricts to three foot, three inches wide, allows it to access tight areas and reduce damage to yards and properties, improving efficiency in residential and confined spaces where larger equipment cannot operate. The purchase will be made through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract and includes a discount of nine thousand seven forty-seven thirty-six. The final cost for the city is thirty-two thousand one sixty-four sixty-four, which is below the amount approved by the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-seven.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-seven. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a mini excavator and two buckets for the Water Department.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-seven. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-seven. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a mini excavator and two buckets for the Water Department.
Final passage? Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-seven. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
A specialized goose neck trailer was first presented during the Street Department's strategic planning process and again during the fiscal year twenty-six budget work session. Following the further discussion, it was reinstated into the final twenty-six budget during the city council's decision. Tree process. Consequently, the Street Department is requesting approval to purchase a thirty-six-foot, forty-thousand-pound goose neck trailer to enhance the Street Department's ability to transport heavy equipment, such as the asphalt paving machine, to job sites. This trailer will improve efficiency and support the safe and reliable movement of critical machinery across job sites without damage to the equipment.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-eight.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-eight. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a goose neck trailer for the Street Department.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five seventy-eight. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a goose neck trailer for the Street Department.
Final passage? Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-eight. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
After city council approval, staff applied for and received a grant from the Missouri Division of Tourism to fund wayfinding signage throughout Sedalia. As part of the implementation process, the project was put out for bid. Two bids were submitted, however, both were deemed noncompliant. One bidder failed to acknowledge the required amendments. Both used incorrect bid forms, and neither signed and dated the IFB signature pages as required. Following consultation with the granting agency, the Sedalia Convention and Visitors Bureau, it was determined that there was no sufficient time remaining in the current grant cycle to, to rebid and complete the project successfully. The city was subsequently authorized to reapply for the grant in the next fiscal year twenty-six, which provides a full grant window on, from July first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. The city has since been notified that it has been rewarded the grant and can move forward with the project with a new bidding process. Staff respectfully recommends that council formally reject all bids received for IFB two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-ten related to fabrication and installation of wayfinding signage. The project will rebid under the new grant cycle, allowing adequate time for competitive bidding and project completion.
All right, for this matter, we're going to need a voice vote. First, can I get a motion and second to formally reject these bids? First, can I get a motion and second to formally reject these bids?
Motion to reject the bids?
Second.
I have a motion to second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the rejection of these bids? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
During the fiscal year 2026 budget planning sessions, the City Council was presented with a proposal to fund roadway and sidewalk rehabilitation along Mill Street north of Third Street. This area is part of the broader redevelopment effort at 521 East Third Street led by Holland Holding Company, LLC, which is revitalizing a portion of the formerly underutilized property. To support this redevelopment, which includes the Boys and Girls Club, West Central Missouri, future residential apartments, and additional nonprofit service facilities, staff recommends approval of an infrastructure development agreement with Holland Holding Company, LLC, under the terms of the agreement. The developer will construct stormwater improvements, sidewalk curbs, and install streetlights along the south and west edges of the project site. These improvements will extend the downtown street cape and address longstanding drains issues along South Mill Street. The city will reimburse developer for up to $525,000 in certified infrastructure construction costs, motorized over 10 years. The city will directly divide the materials and labor for paving Mill Street and supply the light fixtures, which will be installed by the developer. This partnership supports the economic development, improved infrastructure, and enhanced social services while increasing contentivity in the area posed for long-term growth and investment.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-79.
Bill Number 2025-79, an ordinance authorizing an infrastructure development agreement between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Holland Holding Company, LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-79, an ordinance authorizing an infrastructure development agreement between the Cities of Sedalia, Missouri and Holland Holding Company, LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson is absent, Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Thank you Chairman Hiller.
Thank you.
We move on to resignations. I believe we have a couple there. Go ahead and call for the reading of the resignations.
Yeah, we have resignation from Lee Scribner from Board of Appeals and Zoning Board of Adjustments effective immediately.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the resignation? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have two renewals tonight. Jessica Diggin doing business at O'Rourke Mexican Restaurant, 1400 South Limit for Liquor by the Drink Sunday Sales, and Henry Hatfield doing business at E Street Bar at 1201 East Third for Liquor by the Drink and Sunday Sales.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the liquor licenses? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we come to the final action of the 2024-2025 Sedalia City Council. Hearing no further business, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn Sina DA formally concluding the service of the seated council.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? At this time, we will recognize our outgoing members of the Sedalia City Council. These individuals have given generously of their time and talents in the service to this community. We'll go ahead and invite up Councilman Chris Marshville and Councilman Steve Bliss to receive flat. Thank you, Councilman Bliss and Councilman Marshall. If either one of you would like to... If either one of you would like to take a few minutes to address the council, we'll go ahead and you have a podium here to give you a few minutes.
Go ahead, Steve, and I'll give it to you.
Is it? Okay. I think it's mine, but I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, now we move on to the swearing-in of our newly-elected council members. This includes two individuals who have been reelected and two who are joining the council for the first time. We will invite each council member forward individually to take their oath of office, and they may invite family members or loved ones to stand with them as they are sworn in. Our newly-elected members are Second Ward Councilman Lee Scribner and Fourth Ward Councilwoman Michelle Franklin. The reelected members are First Ward Councilman Tom Oldham and Third Ward Councilman Bob Cross. Each will be offered the opportunity to make remarks following their oath. So we'll go ahead and start with Councilman Oldham.
I am Mr. Oldham. I solemnly swear or affirm that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, that I will support the Constitution of the States, and the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state, the provisions of all laws of this state, the third class, and the ordinances of the city, and faithfully
Next, we'll invite up Second Ward Councilman-elect Lee Scribner. And feel free to bring your family up if you want to.
You've got to make those up.
I solemnly swear or affirm that I possess all the qualifications. I buy law for the office of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state, the second city of the third class, and the ordinances of the city, and faithfully to do my duty. And here's your certificate of election.
And now we'll invite up Fourth Ward Councilwoman Michelle Franklin.
I solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications, and I buy law for the City of Sedalia, Missouri, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state, the second city of the third class, and the ordinances of the city, and faithfully to do my duty.
Please call the roll for the newly-seeded 2025-2026 Sedalia City Council.
Robinson is absent. Oldham.
Here.
Scribner.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
First item on our agenda is acknowledgement and receipt and understanding of the council code of conduct as well as the city's fraud policy. Clerk Myers, if you could please hand those out. Attached to each of those documents is a receipt. Mayor Pro Tim. We'll now open the floor for nominations. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Ms. Foster.
I'll second.
I have a second, a motion and a second for Ms. Foster. Do I have any other nominations? Having heard none, do I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Clerk Myers, if you will proceed with the election.
Robinson is absent. Oldham.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
You have seven yes and one absent.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have the election of the council member to serve on planning and zoning. Now we'll go ahead and open the floor for nominations. Do I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Lee Scribner, please.
I have a nomination for Lee Scribner. Do I have any other nominations? Having heard none, we'll go ahead and if I could entertain a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion to second to close nominations.
Mr. Mayor, we needed a second on the...
Oh, well, I don't believe we do, but we can get one. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a second. Now I'll go ahead and do I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Do I have a second?
Take it.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Clerk Myers, if you go ahead and proceed with the election.
Robinson is absent. Oldham.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, now we have the announcement of committee assignments. Clerk Myers has those. If you go ahead and pass those out, Clerk Myers to each council member.
I just have the one.
No, we have one. Go ahead and read it.
Okay. Okay. For Public Safety Council Committee Chairperson Lee Scribner, Vice Chairperson Jack Robinson, Member Bob Hiller. Community Development Council Committee Chairperson Rhiannon Foster, Vice Chairperson Bob Cross, Members Tina Bogus, Michelle Franklin. Finance and Administration Council Committee Chairperson Tina Bogus, Vice Chairperson Tom Oldham, Member Lee Scribner. Public Works Council Committee Chairperson Michelle Franklin, Vice Chairperson Tina Bogus, Member Rhiannon Foster.
All right, thank you. Now what we're going to go ahead and do is we're going to do a 30-minute recess, which means that the council will convene back at 7:47, and we're going to recess for reception in the lobby. Everyone's invited to attend, and refreshments are available. So with that, we'll enter the 30-minute recess. We will now reconvene and proceed to our closed session as noticed on the agenda. I will now entertain a motion to move to close session in accordance with RSMO 610.021, subsections 1, 2, 3, and 12. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson is absent. Oldham.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yep.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
I did this one.
Good guy, the end charge.
I don't know.
While I was sitting here, I wanted everybody to have prayers for maybe else. She had a deal on top of her head today. Thing is, hey, Joe. Thing is, the thing is, if you wait too long, he may not be here. I mean, this guy is pretty sick. But I understand. Listen to this. Come, come in and go. And then he's got that. Guy's got stage four. Stage four liver cancer, he's dying. He's got.
Oh, here in the area?
No.
Oh, yeah, you, yeah, you're showing.
Yeah, she was here.
Val is here?
Yeah, she was here.
Oh, yeah?
Let's see what, leave a motorcycle. It's damn, that guy bought one from the bad. He bought it in Kansas, he said, he would leave a museum, he brought it back and restored.
Jason, that nomination thing is on page 433, Robert's rule.
It's good to know.
Good. All right. Very good. I will now entertain a motion and second to return to the regular open session.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Here.
Scribner?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Hiller?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Franklin?
Here.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025 dash 80.
Bill Number 2025-80. An ordinance approving a quitclaim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 1615 South Marvin Avenue from the city of today, Missouri, to shoot of properties.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes?
Bill Number 2025-80. An ordinance approving a quitclaim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 1615 South Marvin Avenue from the city of today, Missouri, to shoot of properties.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. I will now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025 dash 81.
Bill Number 2025-81. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to real estate purchase and sale agreement by and between the city of today, Missouri, and McDonald's USA LLC, a Delaware limited liability company.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes?
Bill Number 2025-81. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to real estate purchase and sale agreement by and between the city of today, Missouri, and McDonald's, you know, McDonald's USA LLC, a Delaware limited liability company.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson is absent. Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. I will now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025 dash 82.
Bill Number 2025-82. An ordinance authorizing a temporary construction easement on property located 632 East Broadway Boulevard to McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, for construction of a building and related improvements.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes?
Bill Number 2025-82. An ordinance authorizing a temporary construction easement of property located at 632 East Broadway Boulevard to McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, for construction of a building and related improvements.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of Bill Number 2025 dash 82. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson is absent, and Oldham?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Now I'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025 dash 83.
Bill Number 2025-83. An ordinance authorizing a storm sewer easement agreement by and between the city of today, Missouri, and McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, on property located 632 East Broadway Boulevard.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025 dash 83. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes?
Bill Number 2025-83. An ordinance authorizing a storm sewer easement agreement by and between the city of today, Missouri, and McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, on property located at 632 East Broadway Boulevard.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. I'll now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025 dash 84.
Bill Number 2025-84. An ordinance approving and accepting a storm sewer easement agreement by and between McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, and the city of today, Missouri, on property located at 632 East Broadway Boulevard.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025 dash 84. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes?
Bill Number 2025-84. An ordinance approving and accepting a storm sewer easement agreement by and between McDonald's Real Estate Company, Delaware corporation, and the city of today, Missouri, on property located at 632 East Broadway Boulevard.
Final passage.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yeah.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson is absent. Oldham?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Now I will entertain a, a motion to adjourn the open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Congratulations to the four of us.